This regular meeting of September 12th, 2022 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Prohaska.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sancy.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we're very excited to have some visitors from Lincoln Elementary School to lead that pledge with us.
My name is Jerrianna, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Lakai, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Emerson, and I'm in second grade.
My name is Olana, and I am second grade.
My name is Emmett, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Mason, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Rosam. I'm in fifth grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job. Can we take a picture with you? Yeah. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
It's nice to hear the young voices.
It is.
Yes. Glad to have that tradition back to our board meetings.
Yep. I move that the Board of Education approved the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approved the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on August 8th, the special meeting on August 24th, the special meeting of August 31st, and the special meeting of September 2nd, 2022, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approved the minutes of the regular meeting of August 8th, the special meeting of August 24th, the special meeting of August 31st, and the special meeting of September 2nd, 2022, as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to board salutes, and I understand we have a board salute.
I do have one. Our board salute goes to everyone involved in ensuring that the district was able to maintain operations last Friday when the boil water advisory was in fact, in effect for a large portion of the city. Everyone from our food and nutrition staff who secured bottled water and our truck drivers who came in early to ensure that the water was delivered to the schools before the start of the school day, to our buildings and ground staff who ensured fountains were taken out of service, and principals and school staff who exhibited great flexibility throughout the day. All of them deserve a great thank you. The work of many in this situation allowed us to ensure that students could be in school learning throughout the challenges of the advisory. So, thank you to everyone.
That was a tricky day.
No.
Any other board salutes? All right. Thank you.
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So, we're going to start with Lincoln Elementary, what's going well, which is listed on our agenda. Welcome, Megan.
Good evening. My name is Megan Allsinger, and I am the principal at Lincoln Elementary. I want to thank Superintendent Hawkins and the Board for allowing us this opportunity to talk about what's going well in our school. So, Lincoln has expanded our unique Title I tutoring program this year to include extracurricular activities. We started this process last year, so students are working through literacy instruction and also have an opportunity to do basketball or dance team, depending on their preference, in grades three through five. It's been three weeks of school. We already have 100 students signed up, so we're really excited about that. Lincoln has welcomed our new therapy dog, Roscoe, to our staff. Roscoe is spending the year with Ms. Stinas, our counselor, and has already met with quite a few students here at Lincoln. He's doing individual counseling sessions or individual meeting sessions and also is doing guidance within the classroom. We'd also like to thank and invite the Board for the opportunity to talk about our Lincoln Fall Carnival, which will be taking place on September 29th from 3:30 to 6:00 at Lincoln Elementary. We have a literacy focus this year. We also have several activities planned and working with many of our stakeholders in the community, such as Iowa State Extension, the Dubuque Fire Department, local community vendors, and the Dubuque Morning Optimists, as well as others. So, anyone is welcome to attend. Our playground project is in its planning stages, and we're excited to be moving forward with our archaeological survey, and we're excited to see what comes next with that. So, we'd like to welcome the Board to visit Lincoln anytime and invite you to see the wonderful things happening in our school, and want to thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This will be a regular feature of our school board meetings, is getting to hear from, from schools and what's going on. So, at this time, if there are people in the room who wish to address the Board, we invite you to do so at this time. However, if you're here to talk about the soccer complex sale, there's a public hearing that's coming up next on the agenda that has a public comments section, and so we'd ask that you save your comments about that sale to that public hearing. So, if there's any other things that you'd like to talk to us about, this is an opportunity to do that. You can come up to the microphone. You have to limit your comments to three minutes, state your full name, and your connection to the district.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
We're already in open forum.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Well, let's keep, let's keep doing it.
Hearing none, I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So, that brings us then to the public hearing about the soccer complex property, and we're going to start with an overview from our superintendent, Amy Hawkins.
Thank you, Kate. As we begin this evening, I thought it was really important for us to give a brief overview and background of the process that we've put in place in selling of the Dubuque Soccer Complex. Two years ago, in May of 2021, the Board decided to inform the Dubuque Soccer Alliance that it would not be renewing the lease for the complex when it ends in May of 2023, and that the district intended to sell that property. The property was appraised at a value of $1,552,000 as currently zoned for residential use and was appraised as commercial property for $1,170,000. The Board expressed its desire to create a fair bidding process for purchase of the property. The district's legal counsel at Henry was consulted on possible procedures for the sale of the land. The Board established facility beliefs for the decommissioning and sale of the property, which were that future facility use aligns with the district's strategic plan priorities and goals, that future facility use serves youth, families, and community, and that the district receives reasonable compensation for the facility as return on the taxpayers' investment. In July, the Board voted to approve and then publicized a clearly defined process to accept bids, with bids being submitted directly to the district's legal counsel. Bids were accepted for one month. They opened on July 19th and were sealed with a deadline clearly placed for 5:00 PM on August 18th. No bids were reviewed or opened until they were unsealed and reported on by the district's legal counsel at a public meeting on August 24th. At that time, the Board received two sealed bids for the soccer complex. One from the Dubuque Soccer Alliance in the amount of $1,552,000 and one from Court One LLC in the amount of $1,800,000. Prior to and following the opening of bids, the Board has received hundreds of emails, phone calls, public comments at, at board meetings, and personal interactions from individuals on the selling of the soccer complex. I personally want to thank all of you who have given feedback and who will give feedback again tonight, and I want to thank each of the board members for taking their time to strongly consider all viewpoints received from those who are very passionate about this topic on both sides. So, with that, we'll proceed to the public hearing of the, of the complex.
I move the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the soccer complex property and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the soccer complex property and authorize payment of legal notice publication costs to the Telegraph Herald. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So, now, we're at the public comment section of this hearing. So, this has to do with the sale, and it's also pursuant to a petition that we received on September 9th, 2022. So, every member of the Board received a copy of that petition, and its discussion is part of this public hearing. So, if you'd like to address the Board, same rules apply that we laid out for the last one. You need to limit your comments to three minutes. We have a handy timer that's right there so that you can see how much time you have left. State your name and your connect, your full name and your connection to the district.
I am a taxpayer in the community district. So, Chris Myers, and I'm here representing the Friends of the Dubuque Soccer Complex. I'm also the former president of the Dubuque Soccer Alliance, a former district soccer coach, former soccer official, and most importantly, the son of Dave "Mr. Soccer" Myers, who was a founding member of the soccer club, soccer alliance, concessionaire, head of maintenance, and a 2008 Iowa Soccer Hall of Fame. This is his hat he wore all the time out there. For those who've ever been out there seeing him driving his car, this is his hat. My dad was Mr. Soccer. This is the grandfather, Pete Campbell, who unfortunately passed away before he was able to enjoy the soccer complex. So, I do thank you for taking time to read and consider my correspondences over the past several weeks. Today, you should have received a letter from the Friends of the Dubuque Soccer Complex. I will not belabor the points in that letter as they have already been made public. However, I will reemphasize that we outline in the letter that we stand ready to help this school district address their funding shortage by offering a $500,000 donation with the contingency of the soccer alliance becoming the owner of the soccer complex's land. We do this to protect the investment, legacy, and future of soccer in Dubuque. And also, at the 11th hour at 4:15, another message from an anonymous donor is willing to, if both bids are rejected, to pay any increase, the full amount, soccer lines will not have to get alone on top of the $500,000 donation. We respectfully ask that you give full consideration to our request. It's being said that a process was agreed upon and is being followed. Leaders in our school, community, our businesses, including myself, are challenged to evaluate previous decisions and processes when new information presents itself. This is no different. I ask you, the elected leaders of our school district, to do your duty to make sure no stone is unturned, to inform yourself of all sides when a decision of this magnitude is in front of you. Now, I want to be clear. We are not against the concept that Court One is proposing. In fact, it's my belief that many, if not all of this group is ready to stand by and help Court One make it a reality here, just not the soccer complex. It is said there will still be soccer out there. That is correct, but in a limited fashion. At that time, the soccer complex idea was conceived. Every game took place across the city. Any reduction of field result in that model going back to it. I'll quickly end. In 2010, the school district began discussions of the consolidation of elementary schools due to upcoming shortfalls. The Board at that time had the foresight that consolidation of schools was the right thing for the long-term financial success of the school district. To the best of my knowledge, the sale of the soccer complex was not even a consideration at that time. Further proof is that the district signed an additional 10-year lease with the DSA in November of 2012. The decision to abandon that consolidation plan in 2010 put in motion of where we're at here today. Why was the soccer complex not needed to bridge that gap back then? As I mentioned in the previous email, a generational decision is upon you. Please take great care in making that decision. Thank you.
We need to have order in the room. We need to have order in the room. You really can't clap in between. It's going to delay, so please don't do that again.
My name is Teresa Oliver. I come to you as a soccer mom, as a lifelong member of this community, and as a registered voter who never misses an election, not even a school board one. I am disappointed and dismayed that we have come this far along in the process, and only now we are asking the public and the voters who put you in your position, what comments they have on the sale of the soccer complex. The process that you established for this sale was seriously flawed, flawed from the start, and I really question your judgment. You should have held a public feedback session before you voted, and I think you forgot who you answer to in this community. I want to address to the board members some of the comments made at the last session I heard by the board members. Anderson specifically, I really am disappointed in you, sir. You dismissed the sweat equity in the last meeting, talking about how many groups tragically in the past have had their own work and sweat equity left unrewarded. That didn't miss me, but what I did find interesting was that when Anderson had the opportunity to reward decades of sweat equity in his own community, he turned his back on his own community and did not do that. So, I guess people in positions of power really aren't that different at all over space and time, even though they would like to think themselves so. Comments were also made that the soccer complex only benefits a few, when in fact it has benefited thousands over the past years and would benefit thousands more over the next 50 years. Can we say that Court One is going to have that longevity? I don't think so. The only folks who will benefit from Court One are those who can afford it. The comments that I have heard seem to act like it's some sort of public utility available to all. It's available to those who can pay for it, and please miss me with that saying that Court One only wants to break even. I mean, really, Dubuque, are we that naive? If you believe that I've got some oceanfront property for sale for you in Arizona, Court One isn't going to be there on the next election cycle, but I can tell you as a registered voter, I am, and there are only two people right now who are going to be getting my vote and my friends' vote and my community's vote. Once again, I feel that you have shown a massive lack in judgment establishing a process that did not include feedback from the voters prior to you then making a decision on the opened bids. I implore you to reinstate.
That's time. Thank you.
My name is Colby Bowers, also a taxpayer, member in the Dubuque Community School District. I do live outside the city of Dubuque. I've sent a number of emails to the Board, and they have my latest one with information about some of the actual sales of property in the west side of Dubuque over the last few years. Property values ranging from $115,000 per square, or per acre to over $527,000 per acre. Okay? These are actual sales, and I think they show that the value of the soccer complex is much higher than what they're getting for it. I enjoy the Board, enjoying the Board to do the right thing. Selling the soccer complex to Court One LLC for one-third or less than its true commercial value is not the right thing. I know that. The people of the Dubuque Community School District know that, and I think that deep down, the members of the Board know that also. Life is much easier and more rewarding when you do the right thing.
I'm a professor at Whortberg Seminary and a parent of two boys in the school district, one of whom has been very active in soccer programs at the Dubuque Soccer Complex since 2015. I'm strongly against selling the soccer complex as currently proposed, and I'll share two short reasons for this point. They are land use and community building. First, the proposed sale would be the privatization of an important publicly-owned facility. The potential transition of such a widely-used public resource to private ownership deserves much better engagement with local stakeholders than the school board has shown to this point, and hopefully that will be corrected at tonight's meeting. Second, the current proposal hurts families like mine who are not originally from this area, who really need places to connect as newcomers. The Dubuque Soccer Complex is a uniquely welcoming setting where kids and families can get to know one another, whether they're longtime residents or relatively new. Such vibrant community building is a value expressed in the school board's stated mission that we heard earlier, to prepare world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. In that light, the district's stewardship of the soccer complex has certainly been a success story in the past, and for the sake of the families that this school district represents, I hope that better proposals than the one set forth can be pursued. In conclusion, I'm against the current proposal and support further discussion on how this public property can best serve our whole community. Thank you.
Anybody have something you can stand on?
I'm going to give you the microphone.
Here we go. Stand up here so that I can see you.
My name is Emmett Stady, and I've been playing soccer for a long time here. I love playing soccer at the Dubuque Soccer Complex. I've played every season since I was three years old. I've made some of my best friends on these fields. Because of playing soccer at the soccer complex, I've made a new friend who is from Ukraine that speaks very little English. Even though we can't always understand each other, we have soccer as our common bond. This is just one of the many experiences we have as kids on the soccer fields.
I love playing soccer at the Dubuque. My name is Emmett, and I've been playing soccer at the Dubuque Soccer Complex. I've made every season, I've played every season since I was three years old. I've made some of my best friends on these fields. Because of playing soccer at the soccer complex, I've made a new friend who's from Ukraine that speaks very little English. Even though we can't always understand each other, we have soccer as our common bond. This is just one of the many experiences we have as kids on the soccer fields. We include anyone regardless of their ability. Isn't this something you should be trying to achieve as a school board? We play in soccer festivals and tournaments in other cities in which we could hold these types of events in Dubuque. To do this, we need to keep all the soccer fields. We need more fields, not less. Please don't destroy the only soccer complex Dubuque has to offer. Think about what you'll be taking away from me and hundreds of children that are students in your schools. We deserve better from you. Please don't destroy our soccer complex.
Thank you. My name is Clark Johnson. I'm a taxpayer and a voter here in the Dubuque Community School District. I'm asking that the Dubuque Community School Board reconsider the recent action to accept the bid from Court One for the purchase of the Dubuque Soccer Complex. The sale of the Dubuque Soccer Complex to Court One will significantly disadvantage approximately 1,200 youth and adult soccer players within our community, some of our youth starting as young as three years old. Today, the Dubuque Community School District allows basketball, volleyball, baseball, softball, and other sports to rent school facilities at a very reasonable rate, and I think it is great to see the school district support these groups and encourage participation and development of the youth in our community. In addition to the school locations, these sports also have programs offered to them from the Y, leisure services by the city, Boys and Girls Clubs, Dubuque Sports Complex, the Mystique Ice Arena, and the Piasta Community Center, just to name a few. The Dubuque Soccer Complex has seven fully-developed fields. The user groups include the Dubuque Soccer Club Developmental Program, the Academy Program, AYSO, Key City Soccer, in addition to the school district's cross-country teams. And as we speak this evening, there are many players and parents that couldn't be with us as they're out practicing tonight using all seven fields. By accepting the bid from Court One, you are doing this to the detriment of the youth soccer players in Dubuque. Court One will render multiple soccer fields unplayable as they place a bubble or structure on fields and also add parking facilities. Where will our youth soccer players practice and play? There are no additional fields that are play-ready. While there may be some who think that accepting the bid from Court One will be more inclusive and serve a larger portion of the youth in our community, in fact, the opposite will Instead of being more inclusive, soccer group will be excluded from using existing facilities, and instead of serving more youth, we will serve less youth. I understand how important it is to consider the impact of additional money when sitting on the Board, but I'm also asked that you consider how important the impact is to being more inclusive and serving more youth within our community. Thank you.
Nancy.
My name is Henry Corbett. I'm nine years old, and I'm in fourth grade. I've been playing soccer for six years. I've played other sports, but soccer is my favorite. Right now, I'm playing for the U-10 team. I love practice early just to be here. I'm very worried about the future at the soccer complex. We have tournaments in eastern Iowa, Dubuque, Muscatine, Bettendorf, Laverly, and Cedar Rapids. If any more, if any of the fields get torn up in Dubuque, we won't have any more tournaments here. We'll have to travel out of town for, for all of our games, and we'll be limited on practice times, too. I believe that the Dubuque Soccer Alliance will take better care of the soccer complex because they have been taking care of it for 30 years and made it... because they have been taking care of it for 30 years and made it better. My mom said your mission is to develop citizens of character, which she explained to me is a good person. You, you need to be fair to be a good person. This is not fair. If you want to show us what being a good person is, then be fair. Your mission also includes inclusive community, which means to include everyone. I'm worried if... I'm worried if any of the fields get torn up, there might not be a U-9 or U-10 team. Then my teammates and I won't get to play, or it might get too expensive for some kids to play, and that's not including everyone. I believe that you can make a better choice and sell the soccer complex to the Dubuque Soccer Alliance.
Hello, my name is Adam Icann. I spoke with you about a month and a half or two months ago, actually. I happen to be the treasurer of the Dubuque Soccer Alliance and the Dubuque Soccer Club Board, because nobody else would do it. I'm really glad you guys are all here today, but if everybody had shown this level of enthusiasm for the soccer alliance and the soccer club six, eight, 10, 12 months ago, this wouldn't be happening. So, that's where we're at. So, sorry about chastising you, but that's how I feel about the, the lack of support a year ago, okay? My son plays soccer with all of his heart, and my daughter plays soccer and loves cross-country. So, my family has a lot to lose if these fields are lost. Many of us were skeptical when Court One were in the bidding process and it was playing out. And after Court One's bid moved forward, there was a lot of fear and speculation running rampant, especially on social media. And during that time, the Dubuque Soccer Alliance has been talking with Court One and learning more about them and their vision. And it became apparent to me individually that their vision can work. I trust them at their word to fulfill that vision. They're looking for good collaboration and partnerships with the different sports groups and establish an advisory board that has the different groups: the softball, the basketball, the soccer especially. This board will help shape the way that the complex will be used. Soccer will get two members on this board to serve as advocates for the soccer community. If a year ago, someone had told me that the Dubuque Soccer Alliance would have an opportunity for a $1 lease for the fields and access to an indoor turf field, I would have encouraged us to jump on the deal. And so, contrary to the previous speakers, I support Court One's purchase of the soccer complex and look forward to many years of partnership with them. Thank you.
My name is Carrie Lorman. I live at 1840 Asbury Road in Dubuque. I'm a parent of three Dubuque Public Schools children for the last eight years. My son, who attends Washington Middle School, has played club soccer in Dubuque for seven years, traveled soccer for six. He also plays with the Iowa ODP, which stands for the Olympic Development Program. I'm a homeowner, a taxpayer, I'm an engineer, I work in private industry. Like others here, I'm an involved community member. I've supported several elected school board officials who sit here before us, along with working on campaigns for city council members, our mayor and state legislators. I've sat on city of Dubuque boards and commissions and the boards of other nonprofits. I believe that our schools and government exist to work for and support our community. That's why we have elected officials. It's a big job, it's a lot of work, but like all levels of government, decisions about schools or school property should not be made in a vacuum. Public hearing is required for a reason. Public schools are paid for, supported by, and serve the public with tax dollars, public and parent involvement, and community partnerships, like the ones with the Dream Center and the Soccer Alliance. It's difficult to try to set up a clear and transparent process for entities to bid on property that one group built and has managed for three decades. It's difficult to make that look fair, because it's not simple. It's extremely complex. I wish that Court One was a good match for Dubuque soccer, but I believe it absolutely is not. The DSA at first did their due diligence, and that is why they bid on the property to own it and continue to manage it as they have for the last 30 years. I've heard remarks like, "We hope the parties can work together." "We appreciate the strong connections the community has to this facility." It would be nice if the parties could work together, but you cannot make a collaboration from a situation where a group has just ripped the rug out from under another group. You don't get true collaboration from that. You can get strong-arming and bribes of promises to be compliant. Now, the community has just raised $500,000 in seven days, and we have another offer to emphasize that something is wrong here. We want to help the school district solve their problems. Will you help us solve ours? Now, this has put the alliance and local soccer clubs in a terrible position of needing to move forward with whatever happens, no matter how heartbroken and betrayed some feel, no matter how lousy the near future may look. But as a parent, a taxpayer, and a community member, I don't feel muffled. This is not about nostalgia. This is about something being destroyed versus what is truly best for our whole community. And I ask the Dubuque School Board to change course from their previous votes on the sale of this property.
Good evening. As the Vice President of Dubuque Soccer Alliance, I want to share with you where we are as the alliance at this moment in time.
Could you state your name?
Yes, sorry. My name is John Dunham. I'm the Vice President of Dubuque Soccer Alliance. As the Vice President, I want to share with you where we are as the alliance at this moment in time. Based on the developments over the last few weeks, we entered into good-faith discussions with the leadership of the Court One group. As a result of those ongoing discussions, we have agreed to the basic terms that would allow for the Dubuque Soccer Alliance to be a tenant of the land. These good-faith discussions between the two bidders are in line with the timeline of decisions made by this board regarding the sale of this property. Please note, the alliance has maintained healthy and proper lines of communication with the Dubuque Community School District since the very beginning of this process. As the alliance, we will always do our very best to execute our mission to the fullest extent we are capable of: building community-oriented, equitable, and affordable soccer programs for our players and their families. Thank you.
I'm Natalie Berg. I moved to Dubuque in 93. My three sons have been played in soccer and cross-country. I love the complex. Two years ago, the board told the soccer alliance that they were going to not renew the lease. Superintendent Rennigan verified that if the complex was ever sold, the DSA would get the first option to buy. This was a verbal agreement for 30 years. The current school board has broken that promise and put the complex up for a bid. After 30 years of DSA's great stewardship and development of sloping cornfields into a soccer complex, with an estimate of $2 million invested by the DRA, the Dubuque Racing Association, the city, John Deere, and community members, the school board said August 31st that this carries no value to them. The school board also has taken no value in the request of the city mayor, the city manager, the city council, the state representative, all who've asked DSA to get the complex. August 21st, member Bradley and Ryan both said they need to take the opportunity to get the $250,000 from the higher bid to give to the schools. This, there was no stipulation in the bidding process that they had to take the highest bid. Can't the board think outside the box for a different way to get funds than by destroying the only soccer complex in this whole area? AYSO had over 600 participants this year, ages, I guess it's three, but four to 19 adults, mental and physically disabled, and they only charge them $60 to $80 to participate in a 10-week instruction and matches. They get a uniform, and some of them have to pay a little bit more for some other fees, but no more than $135. What an inclusive, amazing program. The other clubs that we're told of, they also have over 300, or 600 participants. The complex fields are full in the summer and the fall evenings. We need more fields. Why would the board not honor their verbal agreement and respect their community leaders and families? I looked up Court One, and it's not inclusion for the whole community. The school board said it was. On their website, it's like a court sport training program, and I called two times, left messages, and nobody returned my call. I thought, "What's up? Why don't they call back?" I called Ms. Ryan, the school board member, to understand how could they trust this company from out of town that's for profit? She said she's known the owner for the years. She said she went to high school with him, and he's a good guy, and he would do good for Dubuque. Later, I found out that she, he took her to prom in high school. Hmm, a conflict of interest? Ms. Ryan should probably recuse herself from future voting. How could Court One find out about this company being for sale? I challenge the school board to use this opportunity to teach your youth the value of verbal agreements, the value of donating to a cause, the value of serving your community and building for future youth, the value of volunteering and that it matters. You can stop this bidding process and do the moral and ethical right thing and honor the verbal agreement of 30 years. Honor your city leaders and your community who are, you are supposed to serve. Your decision will be your legacy.
That's time. You need order in the room?
Just, just part of order. One of the things we can do, we want to make sure we listen to everyone. Your opinion does matter, but what's very important as well, that we don't come up here and make false comments, all right? Let's stick to what you believe, what you want. We want to listen, we want to jot those notes down, but we can't accept people coming up here just saying negative comments. So, we appreciate that. And if you can't listen, we will have you leave. We don't want to do that, but we will do that. So, thank you, and please come up and continue to share your thoughts with us. Adam, back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Sancy?
My name is Melina Osai. My name is Melina Osai, and I am a DSC soccer player. And I have made so many friends and I've learned so many skills from playing soccer. One time, me and my family were coming back from a vacation, and I was very tired, but I love soccer so much that I wanted, that I begged my mom to take me to practice. And DSC is such a good team, and I don't want to lose it. My favorite part of soccer is everything, because soccer is awesome, and you can make so many new friends and learn so many new things.
My name is Melissa Osai, and that little girl is my daughter. First of all, when my husband and I decided to move to the Dubuque area four years ago, we wanted to find an area where we could find soccer fields, because our children enjoyed soccer. We needed a complex where they could go from third grade, or through three years old, through high school, to play soccer. We wanted it local. That's why we chose the Dubuque area. Our two daughters had started playing soccer, and I'm going to read part of my letter that I had sent to you guys that I'm sure nobody read, as was apparent the first night. Our two daughters had started playing soccer when they were four years old. So, soccer has been pretty important to our family for over eight years now. We were so excited to see the beautiful Dubuque Soccer Complex and to know that our daughters would have the ability to play there due to playing on DSC and AYSO. And I'd just like to say, as a parent, you don't understand how much time, effort, everything that these kids put out there on those fields. Whether this summer, my oldest daughter, who just turned 12, she volunteered throughout the summer as a soccer ref, completely volunteering for AYSO as a soccer ref. She also, actually, both my daughters volunteered with the VIP group, so they got to play soccer every week with the handicapped children out there, and they loved it and can't wait to do it again. On any given night, you can hear kids laughing and having fun out on the field. They're learning more about the sport of soccer, being part of a team, and learning what good sportsmanship is. But it goes beyond that. The kids are also exercising and having fun while doing it. They push each other to work harder, go farther, and strive to be the best athlete, teammate, and friend. The physical exercise is good for their bodies and for their minds. I can only imagine how many people's lives have been changed because of having the opportunity to play or volunteer at the complex. The complex does so much for so many people. I don't understand how, how a school district that is supposed to put kids first would even think about selling the fields for some, to someone other than the DSA. Think about all the kids and what they would lose. What about all the hard work and the money that the DSA has put into the soccer fields? As I'm about to run out of time, I just want to say, I'm sure they have pickleball at the YMCA.
I'm Matt Nodderman. I'm a father of four kids in the school district, city and county taxpayer several times over. The decisions being made with the Dubuque Soccer Complex are decisions involving my tax dollars. The children that are going to be impacted by these decisions are quite literally my children. Three of them currently play soccer. One of them can't get her shoes on the right feet, but she'll figure it out, and she'll play soccer, too. So, one thing I want to bring up that hasn't brought out, brought up yet tonight, kind of from a different angle, I think there's value in having soccer fields, capacity across the city, but also in one central location, as I said. Four kids, logistically, all playing at the same time, different places, doesn't work. So, there's value in having that number of fields in one central location, which would be lost if Court One were to win the bid here. Also, as others have mentioned, the ability to host tournaments necessitates multiple fields in one central location. So, I also wanted to bring up some of the numbers and kind of talk about that in perspective here, because I don't know that that's been discussed in great detail from what I've heard, at least tonight. The school board and school district operates on a very large budget. So, when numbers get thrown around, you know, $250,000, yeah, to me personally, that's, that's a lot, that would certainly change things. But when you think about it in the perspective of the entire school district, $250,000 doesn't amount to all that much. There's 10,000 students enrolled in Dubuque Community School District, so $250,000 gets whittled down to $25 per student, which is about a quarter of a textbook, so not going to really move the needle a whole lot there. If you look at the school board's budget, 2021, they had expenditures totaling $157 million. So, break that out over a 365-day year, it costs the school $432,000 a day to keep the lights on, pay the bills, run the buses, et cetera. So, $250,000 was that bid differential between DSA and Court One initially. That'll keep the school district running for another half a day. So, putting that in perspective and weighing that against 30 years of hard work, blood, sweat, and tears by all those that built the soccer complex to what it is today, I don't think half a day is an equal trade-off for everything that has come before us and everything that the DSA would have to offer for the next 30 years and beyond. So, I say all that about the budget and the other.
That's fine, thank you.
You never should begin with an apology, but I'm trying to keep up with the times here. See if I can read this thing. My name is Bill Ostola, senior. I am not a member of this, locate this district now. I live down in Tipton, but I was from 1990 through 98. Presently, my son and his family are residents of Dubuque, members of soccer players within the soccer complex. the soccer complex. And I don't have any answers to the financial part. I'll leave that to all of you who have more of that knowledge and understanding. But I will say this: My family has a special relationship with DSA and with the complex going back to the 1990s. In addition to our children and presently our grandchildren receiving training and playing, I had the opportunity to both be on the board, more than both, to be on the board, to coach, and to perform groundskeeping at the complex from 1990 on. Sure, this is not unusual for a number of the soccer families in the greater Dubuque area. However, our relationship with Dubuque Soccer Family changed significantly in '94. In '94, our son Joel, then a sophomore at Hempstead High School, died as a result of a motor vehicle accident. At that time, our whole family was actively involved in the Dubuque soccer world. The immediate support we received from all the soccer families, our neighbors, our church, this Dubuque community, and remember, we were new to the Dubuque area. It cannot be overstated. Also, the efforts to establish a Joel Ostola Scholarship for both a boy and a girl, as well as the installation of a flagpole, and for those of you who have been up there, the commemorative stone remind us each time we observe them about the meanings of life well beyond just playing the game. So many children have experienced growth from childhood to young adulthood with soccer as one of their mainstays in life. Personal development skills well beyond just the physical aspect have been taught to so many youth. I hope that those who have to make this tough decision do not make it solely on the money, that they understand some of what I just tried to share. Thank you.
My name's Shannon Clough, and I'm a Dubuque County taxpayer, and I have three kids that have all played DSC. I am here to support selling to the Dubuque Soccer Alliance, and I'd like to build upon the perspective of budgets and the money that we are gaining here with the $250,000. The Friends of the Soccer Complex raised an additional $500,000 to be donated to the school district. Should the Dubuque Soccer Alliance ultimately be allowed to purchase the complex? Quite honestly, it's embarrassing that it's taken a last-ditch effort and private money to preserve soccer in Dubuque. I'm not laying blame on the school board for the budgetary constraints and the lack of funds allocated to the school district at the state and federal level, but we need to be realistic and not be short-sighted with the impact of $250,000, or any amount, on the long-term operations of the school district. We shouldn't be hiding behind marginal amounts and throwing away 30 years of soccer cross-country history and 30-plus years of our soccer cross-country future to keep the lights on for another half-day of operations, as was already stated. Overall, I don't think it's reasonable or responsible to cannibalize one amenity at the expense of another. There are numerous sites available to Court One to build their facility that they have been approached about. The school board, DSA, and Court One are all comprised of rational individuals that are capable of solving this problem. I would urge the school board to listen to the leaders of our soccer organizations when they say that soccer in Dubuque will be at risk and diminished if Court One builds on the complex, and listen to the parents and the taxpayers, because I'm one of them, and I'm here to say I don't want Court One built over the soccer complex. Hundreds of others have submitted letters saying the same thing. So why? And I never played soccer, but when you know something's right, you have to stand up for it.
Hi, my name is Lisa Carroll, and I'm a 21-year-old volleyball player and coach who graduated from the University of Dubuque and continued my education at the University of Dubuque, so staying local. I'm coaching a local club team ages from eight years old all the way up to 18U, helping players find multiple opportunities. I've seen the firsthand struggle facing gym space during the year, fighting with other sports such as basketball, to find gym space around from middle school to elementary schools for gym space. Court One will provide the needed facilities for multiple sports groups and support multiple groups of children is the mission of the Dubuque School District. I have firsthand seen the struggle it takes to travel for parents and players to get from place to place for multiple tournaments. I've also seen other sports that leave Dubuque to go to Cedar Rapids or Waterloo just for the facility space that is needed. So I am, as a fellow Dubuque person and a local coach, I am supporting Court One.
My name's Carrie Lammer. This is Anna Lammer. Noah is at home. They go to Bryant Elementary. This one's not in school yet. Former soccer player, ASO back in the day, was never a high school player or anything, but Ms. Hawkins coached me volleyball, so volleyball is my sport. And yes, is the need for Court One a need in Dubuque? Yes, absolutely. But if Court One wins, we lose a lot of things, including the access to outdoor soccer fields, increase cost for players, the inclusivity of what the Dubuque soccer complex brings to our children. We don't serve any new kids because Court One is here. In fact, soccer kids lose something. So I don't understand why Court One must be built on the property that punishes a proven partnership that the community has invested in, that's been run by volunteers. I don't understand why Court One can't build somewhere else, and that in order to have something nice and new for Dubuque, we have to sacrifice and lose something that is already of value to our kiddos. So I encourage the board to support the Dubuque soccer complex in the bidding process. Thank you for your time.
My name is Alexis, and I go to school in Dubuque, and I play soccer. Why do I think this is important to me? I play soccer, and I think it's fun and has a big impact on my life. I have a lot of reasons that it should say a soccer complex. There have been a lot of memories there for me, my family, and a lot of other people. The fresh air is good for you, and just getting rid of it will stop that from happening. The outdoor fields will be gotten rid of, and then parents will be complaining that they're casy to get outside. Do you ever recall when you were a kid, okay, it's time to go outside? You're thinking, Mom, do I have to? And then you give thousands, and why not? And she doesn't change her mind? The soccer fields are outside, and it'll get kids excited to go outside. Time for practice? Ready for your game? Come into the backyard so I can help you practice. If you get rid of those fields, that is less room for people to play. Getting rid of fun for people, is that really what you want to do? Getting rid of people's fun, that's just plain outreach. Just imagine you as a kid, and the school board decides to sell the soccer complex and leaves you barely any room to play. How does that make you feel? Think about that for a minute. Does it make you feel hurt, sad, angry, disappointed? I love soccer, and I think about all the people that you will hurt. Think about the neighbors. Is that what they would want? And then would they be mad? They'll also be hurt. Think about, plus, Court One is not even local. It would be a little different if it was local. Please take that into consideration. Help kids and adults continue to get excited about going outside.
My name is Kristi Gatto. I am a parent of children in the Dubuque Community School District, a parent of children that participate in AYSO, a volunteer, a taxpayer, a voter, a community member, your neighbor. I'm here to request your support for the Dubuque Soccer Alliance, receiving the winning bid for the soccer complex. Members of the school board, I have two questions for you. Do you hear us, and do you care about what the community has to say? Nancy, just a year ago, as you were running for reelection on the school board, you said that you, as a board member, wished to help the community know more about the school district and have a stronger voice. You continued to say to the audience, you all bring your unique perspective, your way of understanding your children and grandchildren, this community, and the more we know about that, the more we make right decisions. That's one of the jobs, know your district. Anderson, you also, during your campaign with your servant leadership, you said that you hear real people and real stories, and to hear that allows working together, because we understand it's truly going to take a community in order to build up a community. Here we are, right here, your community. Is the board's voice representative of the community which you serve? Just last month, with all these school board meetings, it was said several times, the deal with Court One is a win-win. A win-win would be if there were only two parties involved, Court One and the school district. Two additional parties are also involved in this decision, the taxpayer-voting community and also the Dubuque Soccer Alliance. It's more like a win-win, lose-lose. The Soccer Alliance has the most to lose in this deal, and it is clear that the community as a whole stands behind the continuation of the Soccer Alliance. Really, Court One has nothing or very little to lose in this property and everything to gain, wholly at the potentially catastrophic expense of the Dubuque Soccer Alliance and all of the community that has come together to make it what it is. I really like the idea of Court One in Dubuque, and I think the community would welcome them, but not at the expense of another longstanding organization. Board members, I understand that the community has heard you and the budget issues and has come with a supporting offer that would enhance the Soccer Alliance's bid significantly above that of Court One. Here we are, community building our community. Can we count on you as an elected board of the community to hear us and our community and support the bid for the Dubuque Soccer Alliance? Thank you.
Superintendent, my name is Rob Coonard. I live at 908 Spies Drive here in Dubuque. For about 20 years, I was a reporter here in Dubuque on radio and also with the Telegraph-Herald. Back in 1992, I joined the Dubuque Soccer Alliance, and I was a member there in the very earliest days of the Soccer Alliance and saw how it was built. And it was built with small donations, corporate donations, tremendous support from John Deere, but volunteer hours on top of volunteer hours. And that has been the situation for the last 30 years. That facility was built on volunteerism and charitable contributions. For it to be sold, all of that embodied energy would be lost, because selling it will take away those soccer fields, and that will eliminate the ability for the Soccer Alliance to hold soccer tournaments. And the schedule is already very, very tight. I mean, it's very difficult for any of the groups. It's one of the biggest squabbles within the DSA is the fight over soccer time. Now, that all being said, I don't know the pressures you're under. As a reporter, I got to see both sides of the coin very often, so I cannot condemn you for what you have to decide. But that soccer complex, as a collaborative project, ranks right up there with what was done by the Dubuque Racing Association and the Port of Dubuque Development and a community collaboration. The Dubuque Flood Wall was built through community collaboration. That soccer complex was built by community collaboration. And I'm asking you, please, please, don't give that away. Don't sell that for $250,000. Please, keep that facility with the Dubuque Racing Association and the kids and families of Dubuque. Thank you.
I'm a parent of two sports children, from Little League Baseball to youth volleyball. I have a lot of windshield time traveling for my children. My adult children are still involved in sports. I wish Dubuque had a place like Court One when my children were young. I feel this facility will give the opportunities to children to be involved in multi-sports, just not one sport. Let them have the opportunity to play more than one sport. I feel this is also going to be a safe indoor facility for practice and play in Dubuque, close to home, where grandparents, parents, aunts, uncles, friends, neighbors, we don't have to travel out of town to these tournaments. It's right here in Dubuque, indoors. We don't have to worry weather permitting. We're going to play. I support Court One.
I didn't plan on coming up here. You probably have seen me with the pitcher.
Can you state your name? Sorry. Go ahead.
Sure, Diane Myers.
Thank you.
Mister Soccer, Dave Myers, the late Dave Myers. Okay. I want to say, there are people that worked at that soccer park from the beginning, volunteered. I mean, my husband worked there for 15 years. I don't think a day came home, a day came home a day when he didn't have a cut or was bleeding or whatever. He's the one that got John Deere. He's the one, he worked at John Deere, and he's the one that went to the head guy and got everything going there. I cannot believe that our beautiful soccer park will be gone. It can't be. I never thought of that in a million years, never. I have felt like I've been punched in the gut and punched in the gut again. Please, leave our beautiful facility alone, and thank you.
I am a taxpayer. I didn't have anything prepared, but listen to that. What's getting lost here is this is not binary. If Court One doesn't get this facility, there are multiple other places for them to go at a lower price, at a lower price. So I am all in favor of Court One. I would love, I would have loved to have an indoor facility when I was young, and I want Court One here. But I worked out there. I don't want to see this go away. No. I don't envy what you guys have to do, but it means a lot. And I just want the right thing to be done and not for $250,000. I want you guys here, I really do. I want to see you guys here, but please don't take the fields.
We're not going to have applause in between, or we're going to have to ask folks to leave. Thank you.
I did not prepare anything either, but I just thought I should speak on behalf of the coaches and a mom of four of the soccer players, what it means to us to have one facility. Sorry, not going to public speaking yet, but as a mom of four, I'm in at that complex Monday through... Monday through Friday, multiple fields. I coach multiple teams because we have one facility to go to. I hop from Field One to Field Three, down to Field Seven, back up. If we lose that capability, we lose our coaching staffs. There's multiple of us who hop from one field to the next because we have the ability to spread ourselves. You know, recently, just going to these other, traveling, you know, you talk about traveling, and I agree, my daughters are multiple sport athletes. We watch in the community, I do too. We go to TBK, we're envious of what they have. It's just that the complex accommodates what we need. I grew up preschool through college playing soccer. My life has been out at that complex as well. And now going from our opponents, your rivals, to now we're coaching, you know, the same teams together, we're parents cheering for our players together on that field. It means something to see my daughters, as one spoke about, you know, when they get home from school, they're getting their uniforms on, they're ready to go. That's the highlight of their day, is to go play on that soccer field and be with their friends and running and getting the exercise and laughing and the sportsmanship that they're building and the camaraderie amongst each other. That's the highlight from my five-year-old, who's ready for soccer Sunday or Saturday morning, to my, you know, my older ones who want, who travel. But the point is, lately, we've been going to all these other complexes, and I just sit there and think like, wow, these are beautiful, what if we lose ours? And our, you know, my aunts, my uncles, the grandparents, everybody that gets to come and watch our kids play because we can host a soccer. You know, they're not able to travel. So if we don't have this, you know, that beam in my children's eyes, or any of the children, they get to have their extended family come see what they love, what their passion is, it means a lot to them. And then this year was our first year for my kids. I played AYSO through, you know, my entire career, but for my children, they played AYSO. And we're from Piastas, so we know our Piasta community, and we know the kids who play in our DSC soccer teams. But they got to meet people from the Dubuque communities this year. They got to widen their array of friends. And now we see these kids throughout the community, at events, at the fair, you know, and they've made these connections that they never would have had we not had these facilities in our fields to use. I echo, you know, even tonight, I dropped three of my children off for practice and busted my butt to get over here, and every field was being used. The cross-country, I'm not sure where.
That's time.
But thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jawan Brookins. I was not planning on speaking tonight at all. Actually, I'm missing dinner right now. But I just want to echo everything that everyone has said, which is basically, thank you guys for doing what you do. I know it's timeless and like tiring. I appreciate what you guys do as a board, because I know that, being on a board myself, I understand what you have to go through. And I wanted to say to Court One and especially the people supporting Court One, I don't think there's anyone in Dubuque, Iowa that doesn't want you here. I honestly believe that. I know there's a lot of like anger and frustration coming out, but it's not toward you, and I don't even think it's toward them. It's that they're losing something that means a lot to them. Like Erin, who I actually got to coach her kids this year, it was pretty cool. Hopefully, I get them next year. I too have four kids, and my three oldest ones have played before. And if my little three-year-old could be out there, she probably would do the same. I'd be more afraid of the kids than her. But it's the community that Erin talks about through AYSO, a lot of these kids that play at AYSO don't have a clue. And me myself, I never played soccer a day in my life, but I've been coaching for the last six years. And getting to see those kids have that glare in their eye when they come to that soccer complex, it means something to everyone, not just the kids, the parents, the coaches, the people who volunteer, but anybody that watches them. And I am a little worried about cross-country as well, because just looking at the facilities being built, I have a freshman in high school that just started running high school cross-country. There's nowhere for him to run if that gets teared down, because half of the route is Field One and Two. So that's another huge thing that they would lose if that building is built there. And I also agree that there's tons of different areas that Court One could be built on, on all four areas of Dubuque. Even having a Court One East and a Court One West would be perfect, because now you're serving not just one area, you're serving multiple areas. I also coach basketball, and it's hard to find a facility to coach an indoor sport at. So I would too would love to see you guys here. I'm just learning about you. I just, you know, through all of this, my time is up, but. If I could, if I could have just one tidbit.
No, sorry, we didn't let anybody else have a tidbit, so.
It's a positive. We need.
Sorry, we gotta stick to our time limits.
Thank you.
So my name is Skylar Ridenhour, and I am a senior this year, and I'm actually seventeen years old, and I actually go to Western Dubuque High School. So for twelve years now, I've been playing soccer in the community, including Dyarsville as well as here in AYSO for five years. Throughout this year, I'm going to be playing in five different soccer leagues, including in the Fall and Winter League at Clark, the Fall, or the Summer and the Winter League for AYSO, as well as playing for my own high school this year. So there is a very big importance for soccer in our community, and especially for AYSO. AYSO allows for people to be playing regardless of their skill level. Across my five years of playing AYSO, I've gotten the opportunity to be with, to play with players that just want to play soccer, and that's what's important to them. Not necessarily competing and winning, but just wanting to be there. And also, that kind of goes into what other people say too about the income level too. AYSO is accessible to anybody that wants to play. And with AYSO, I've also been able to meet new people and meet new leaders that I look up to, such as adults, such as Decker or Chad Thomas, and also just other teammates that I look up to as well, such as Sam and Lupe Morales. And AYSO is big on volunteering, and that's what's important to them. And soccer isn't the only thing I've been playing to. I've also played baseball, basketball, and even wrestling for like a week before I quit, because I didn't like to shower. But ultimately, I quit those sports because I didn't really enjoy them as much as I enjoyed soccer. And while I appreciate what they have to offer and the life experiences that they do, Court One is a private company that is only going to be offering it to those who pay for it. And at the last school board meeting, I was actually there, and when you guys discussed about the priority of who was going to be using that court, I was kind of shocked that you guys hadn't thought of that prior to that. The soccer complex is also a very beautiful place, and I just am so thankful for everybody that put in the sweat equity and put in the hours to make it the place it is. And I even got some of my senior pictures taken there, because that's just how important the place is to me. But going back to what Court One has to offer, I don't have anything against what they're doing at all, and I welcome it, but just like other people said, not at the soccer According to their current plans, my knowledge, I think that Fields One and Two are the ones to be removed, and there's even parts of Three and Four to be removed as well for parking. And Fields Three and Four are the full-size fields that I play on. And even Sam and Lupe Morales, like I said earlier, they even got a new adult league started that are going to be playing on those fields. But I would like to just remind the school board that as I'm seventeen, I'm going to be eighteen, not that long of a time, and the next school board election, I will be voting. And currently, only two of you hold that vote for me.
My name is Tim Shade. Thank you for being here. Thank you for welcoming us here proceeding. I'm here to support the process that the Dubuque Community School Board has followed, advancing to sale the soccer complex to Court One. I have three children that started playing developmental soccer years ago. Two of them are now in the academy program at the Dubuque Soccer Club, and they're volunteering as coaches for younger developmental players, as well as volunteering to referee at both AYSO and developmental soccer. Thirty years ago, the school district, the city, and soccer groups created a partnership, the Soccer Alliance, to transform farmland into a soccer complex to benefit the community and help soccer flourish in Dubuque. When the DSA finally had an opportunity to purchase the complex, we thought the ideal solution was to raise the necessary funding in order to retain all of the fields and eventually make improvement as available funds allowed. Aside from a shift in ownership, this was maintaining the status quo. Sometimes maintaining the status quo isn't the best alternative. Change, while uncertain and uncomfortable, leads to growth. I believe Court One can be a good partner to the soccer community in Dubuque, continuing the initial vision and legacy of the Soccer Alliance. The Court One bid is an indication of their commitment to investing in the community, much like the DSA did thirty years ago. Their planned improvements will benefit soccer, and now other sports, much like the DSA did thirty years ago. Court One has stated that they are committed to preserving soccer in Dubuque, as evidenced by their plans for an indoor, full-size turf field supporting year-round use, expanding soccer programming from six months to twelve months. As reported in the TH, Court One is prepared to continue leasing the soccer fields for $1 a year. This incredible offer will allow the soccer organizations in Dubuque to continue their programs at the rates we have all enjoyed. Nothing will ever diminish or erase the efforts of the countless soccer-focused volunteers who gave their time and energy during the past three decades. Their legacy and impact will continue to be appreciated by future generations of players and spectators. The venue created and maintained by the DSA can now be transformed by a new partnership with Court One, supporting additional activities, additional sports, additional players, additional spectators, while also allowing soccer to thrive and grow. It's difficult to imagine the complex changing, but through partnership with Court One, the change will benefit soccer and the larger sports community and the community of Dubuque as a whole. Thank you for your time. I don't envy your decisions.
Members of the Dubuque Community School Board, my name is Jim Oberman, and I represent, being a coach for girls softball and volleyball, and I'm here to tell you today that eighty percent of my players are gonna attend Hemsetter Senior one year from now. Our team travels to Bettendorf, Coralville, Des Moines, and the Dells to play the sport they love. Sadly, Dubuque does not have a facility of its own. We struggle to find courts for practice. The demand for gym space exceeds what is available, and my team is not alone. This same theme holds true for our girls softball. We travel to Bettendorf, Peoria, Burlington, Des Moines once again. Dubuque has no indoor facility for my team. Every weekend, families are leaving Dubuque for youth sports activities. The Court One proposal provides all youth sports with one location for practices, tournaments, training, something we could all be proud of. Supporting all athletes in the Dubuque community is truly a worthy cause. I respectfully ask the award Court One the opportunity to become a valuable member of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
My name is Amanda Stady. I live in this community. You just saw my son talk early on. I just want to clear something up. Well, I get that your guys' teams have to travel. We travel too. In fact, on Saturday, we traveled to Waverly. Our kids played in the pouring rain, okay? They travel too. Every time our academy teams want to go play somewhere, do you know where they have to play? Bettendorf, Waverly, Cedar Rapids, Cedar Falls, Waterloo, Muscatine. Is that travel? Is that travel? I think that's travel. My parents don't get to come see my kids play, they have to travel. Other people's parents, grandparents don't get to come see their kids play. We all have to travel. Nobody says what you're bringing is not good. It's great. It's awesome. It's tremendous. There are a multitude of different locations that you can build on instead of destroying the soccer complex that serves so many people, thousands of people, families. So I'm just clearing that up, because you guys keep saying, oh, our volleyball team has to travel, our basketball team has to travel, this has to travel, that has to travel. Well, guess what? The U9 soccer teams have to travel, the U10 soccer teams have to travel, the U11 soccer teams have to travel, U12, U13, U14, U15. You want me to keep going? They all have to travel. We're lucky if we get to hold one tournament a year. You take those fields away, we can't hold a tournament. There's not enough fields. And anybody that says there are, they're lying. It's a bold-faced lie.
Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time?
President Parks, other members of the Dubuque Community School Board, Superintendent Hawkins and guests, I am Mike Pete. I'm the president of the Dubuque Soccer Club Board of Directors. I'm also a member of the Soccer Alliance Board of Directors, but I'm not speaking for them tonight. I'm also a parent and a taxpayer in your district. First, I would like to thank everyone involved in taking a piece of farmland, turning it into a soccer complex and maintaining it for thirty years. It is a beautiful complex and has served the Dubuque soccer and cross-country communities well for a long time. The blood, sweat, time, and treasure that so many people devoted to provide a safe place for athletes and families to learn, play, and enjoy soccer will not be forgotten regardless of the decision today. Although these efforts have never paid financial dividends, the value they have created in people is priceless. The skills gained, lessons learned, friendships forged, losses weathered, and memories made have already created a multi-generational legacy. Next, I want to talk about why I volunteer my time and talents with the Dubuque Soccer Club. When my wife and two young children and I moved to the Dubuque area in 2010, we knew only a few people. Looking for activities for the kids to participate in, we were told about soccer and that DSC is the way to go. We signed our oldest, three at the time, up for DSC developmental, and away we went. Although it turned out soccer was not his thing, we discovered a welcoming community of people that we enjoyed spending time with. As our family continued to grow, we kept signing kids up for soccer. I started volunteering as a team manager, and after four years, decided to join the board. Looking back, all six of my kids spent time playing developmental soccer, four of them continuing into the academy program and are still playing today. We have spent countless hours with our DSC family at the soccer complexes of Eastern Iowa and treasured the Dubuque soccer complex as our second home. Lastly, I want you to know that I have done and will continue to do everything in my power to make sure that the youth of Dubuque continue to have a safe place to play soccer and create memories. Soccer is the fastest-growing and second-largest youth sport in the U.S. Cities and towns across the country have been building and upgrading complexes to meet the needs of these athletes. Over the last several years, I have been concerned about how to both keep the complex and build on the foundations created thirty years ago. When Court One first started talking about the soccer, started talking to the soccer When Court One first started talking to the Soccer Alliance, we were in the middle of preparing a capital campaign to acquire the complex and provide the first round of improvements. Their claims and offers sounded far too good to be true, and I was skeptical. However, after several conversations with the Court One team, I believe that their motives are honest and admirable, their mission and vision align and supplement ours. Their teams will work with us to expand on the available soccer facilities. They will keep as much of the original complex intact as possible, and that what sounded too good to be true will actually be something very special that benefits the soccer players and athletes of this community. Therefore, because I believe it to be the best decision for the DSC players, I'm asking the Dubuque Community School Board to proceed with the sale of the Dubuque Soccer Complex to Court One.
Lot to say.
You have three minutes.
Distinguished board members, Madam President, Madam Superintendent, and the citizens of Dubuque. My name is Mitch Brown, I'm the president and CEO of Court One and Global Sports Holdings. I'm Mark Dyer's business partner and longtime friend. Thank you for giving Court One the opportunity to present our vision, our unselfish motivations, and most importantly, our hearts for youth sports. We believe this amazing property is the perfect location for a multi-sport facility. This sports facility will not hurt the soccer community. It will only help and enhance the soccer community of Dubuque. This indoor facility will give the soccer community the ability to have year-round access to indoor fields. This indoor facility will give thousands of hours of additional field time annually that the soccer community never had before. After several meetings and discussions with the DSA Board, they would like to have one full-size indoor soccer field and possibly a second junior-sized soccer field. We believe this request is very possible. By extending the days and hours of playtime of these indoor soccer fields, we are fundamentally adding more soccer field playtime to this property than exists today. We would also like to add even more field playtime to the soccer complex by installing lights to several of the outdoor fields. By adding lights to the outdoor fields, we will be adding hundreds of additional hours annually. The facts are undisputable. By adding indoor soccer fields and adding lights to the outdoor soccer fields, the soccer community will have more hours of soccer playtime than they've ever had before in the thirty-year history. Our number-one goal of this project is to impact as many young children's lives as possible through youth sports. There are so many valuable life skills and lessons that are learned and experienced through team sports. The medical research and data proves that team sports gives our youth better physical and mental health for all ages. Building a multi-sport complex that is inclusive to all youth sports will give the Dubuque community an opportunity to come together in a common place and for a common goal. And that goal is to mentor and nurture the future leaders of this community. The true facts are, this Court One multi-sport facility complex will only bring positive lasting effects to the soccer community and to all sports of Dubuque. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Hello, I'm Mark Dyer with Court One Athletics and a former Dubuqueer. And before I get into my three-minute speech, I need to address a couple of things. I love seeing the passion from the soccer people. I think you're going to be really excited when you hear what we're actually going to do with soccer. Yes, you will. I also want to address some of the shocking statements that I heard that are completely untrue. I think you need to learn your facts before you make statements that could hurt people. I did not go to prom with Tammy, I've never been on a date with Tammy. She went to the same high school I went to, and I have a feeling a lot of people in here went to that same high school. Now, I'll start my three-minute speech and just talk extra fast. Madam President and School Board, three weeks ago, we were happy to submit our sealed bid for the Dubuque Soccer Complex. We followed the proper protocols, and we moved the process forward to purchase this prestigious land, and we're very excited about that. If we win it, we will be good stewards of this land, and we're very thankful to the forward-thinking board members who think that Court One would be very good for Dubuque. I want to address four different entities that will be used in the soccer complex going forward. First of all, to the Dubuque Community School Districts, you will always have access to these fields at no charge. To the cross-country community, and I mean all the cross-country community, you will always have access to that course at no charge. To the soccer community, we were given very clear instruction by the school board that they wanted us to work with the Dubuque Soccer Alliance, and we have done so for three consecutive weeks. In fact, my wife told me the other day, "I think you like the Dubuque Soccer Alliance more than you like your family, because you are always on the phone with them and you're always working things out with them." I've gotten a chance to know these guys over the last thirty days, and I've become very good friends with them. They are a tremendous leadership group that has soccer first and foremost. And guess what? My son-in-law is a collegiate soccer player. I've got soccer big time. And soccer will always have a big part of Court One. Just so you know, it will always have a very big part of Court One. Next, to volleyball, basketball, softball, baseball, pickleball, and more, we intend to do things that you've wanted. You needed court space, we're going to give it to you. You wanted to not travel for an hour and a half, two hours, to go to different communities? That's what we plan on doing. We are taking that commitment serious, and we're going to give you great access. We look forward to working with the city to determine the best place to put our complex. You know, we have seen our support to be over ninety percent of the community of Dubuque. We have been inundated with incredible amounts of phone calls, text messages, emails, and actual voicemails. And quite frankly, we've been blown away by the support, and we are very thankful for it. On the same token, to the minority who's relied on false information, much of what I've heard tonight, and scare tactics about what we're going to do with the land after we get it, which by the way is completely wrong, we intend to show you that we're an honorable company that has the best interest of Dubuque in mind. Those who have called us liars, we are not. Those who think we're going to be out of business, which I heard today, in a year, we won't.
Sorry, Mr. Dyer.
Thank you, thank you.
Seeing no one else come up to the microphone at this time, so...
Are we over for some discussion here?
I think, yeah, we can end public comments, seeing no one else coming, and it is open for board discussion at this time. Did you have some, did you want to start?
First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody for coming. I am a sports guy, okay? Official in many sports, still do a little bit of that. But I'm overall, I maintain my stance on the original, how I voted at the original meeting. I'm in favor of all the other sports that Court One can bring, much so, indoor sports facility, great. I wish, though, that you could find another property. I concur with the people that mentioned this. I, in my mind, I want to do what I think is the right thing to do. I can't discount the thirty-year history of volunteerism, city, DRA, and all the companies and individuals that contributed to the complex. As Mr. Dyer mentioned, that there's overwhelming community support for Court One. I, in being around the community, I hear it the other way. I see, to us board members, the process is one of the factors here. The dollar is one of the factors. And then, the belief in having an indoor facility, that's another factor. I think, though, the one that supersedes all is the dedication and commitment that the Soccer Alliance has made to this facility, made it the great facility that it is. And in accordance with our facility beliefs, the last one says that we have, in disposition of our properties, that we consider whether it benefits youth and the community, and that we receive a fair and reasonable price. And as I echoed in the last meeting, I don't think the $250,000 is that big of a deal. That is my opinion. I was kind of funny that we had the public hearing prior to the motion, which may be before us regarding Court One being the owner of the facility. I wish we could have had the public hearing before, and I don't know the exact rules on that. So I'm going to defer a little bit to Ed and Amy, as far as that goes, that aspect, and then, are there any options left for us?
There is not a requirement that the resolution be adopted at the same meeting as the public hearing. There is a requirement that the public hearing be held before the resolution is adopted. There, and then, as far as other options, the resolution that you adopted to accept sealed bids allowed you to select a bid or to reject all bids. So that would be your option if you were to consider something other than what's on the table. Otherwise, you have the two bids that were received during the sealed bid period.
So in other words, we'd have to reject all bids if we want this to...
If you want to proceed with something other than the two bids that were received during the sealed bid period.
And that would require a motion, correct?
Correct.
Any board members, any other discussion here on that?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and jump in. It seems like you and I have this pattern, last time you spoke and I spoke.
Yeah, then who comes next? No, just kidding.
But connecting to what I said last time, just for those of you who didn't have a chance to attend or to listen, you know, I first started off by recognizing all of the hard work that all of those who put sweat and tears, never dismissing. That's just not who I am or my personality, so I think it's important for me to state that. And again, echo that I do appreciate all of those individuals and families and generations of people who put sweat and tears into this space to give our students the best opportunity to not only connect with other students, but enjoy soccer. I mentioned that for me, it's not just about the money. I've been very public about that. Many of you have called me and asked me about it. Where money was not at the forefront for me, but what was best for all students and not just Soccer Alliance students. And for me, just thinking about all the students who will be able to participate in a variety of activities when we talk about basketball, volleyball, soccer, pickleball, although that was kind of thrown at me. I do think pickleball is also something new that we are seeing throughout the country that's growing, and not just for people that's tall like me, but from what I hear from the community, as someone who's highly involved in the community and talked to a variety of people. But I want to specifically talk about our elderly population, who I have the privilege of engaging, who share, you know what? What about us? What are we going to do, especially during the winter? And by me asking, "What do you guys like to do?", they said, "Pickleball", and that's where I was first exposed to pickleball, and now I get to play it. So for me, it's not about the money, the activities that would be able to expand for a variety of kids. And I also mentioned that the community deserves Court One and the Alliance to work together. I was very clear about that. The community deserves that, that you guys come together, figure out common ground, and figure out how to move us forward. And clearly, you see both of the leadership team doing exactly that, and we appreciate that. We recognize that there's many people who are frustrated, and as Jawan mentioned earlier, it is because there's a strong connection to this land. And I mentioned last time that it's similar to the Fulton Building. There was families who were very disappointed because they had a strong connection. And so again, we would never dismiss the feelings and the connections people have, but we do have to do what's best for all kids in the district. And so I do strongly encourage all the board members to not only think about our values, but what's best for each and every single one of our kids, not only today's kids, but generations to come. To my board members, I do have to say, it is disappointing at times hearing the threats, right, directly or indirectly. And I think we do have to call the elephant out in the room. Everyone has the rights to vote for whoever they want. And to think that we could be bought by saying, you know, some of our state officials, you know, "If you do the right thing, you'll get $500,000". If we hear comments like, "Hey, don't forget, you're up for election", we either will vote for you or not. Many of us, if not all of us, we're not here to be full-time politicians or career politicians. We're here because we care about each and every single one of the kids that are here now and that will come in the future. And the last thing that's kind of disappointing is hearing words like, "We want you here, just not in this community", and I wonder how often... The words were, and I wrote it down, and this is not to go back and forth, and I know there's probably no ill intent, no ill intent, but "We want you in the Dubuque community, just not on this land right here", right, very clear. And how often do certain community members hear that? I think we just have to be, my purpose of saying that is we have to be mindful of the words that we use, right? And we want to be abrasive and inclusive with all people in the community. And I, for one, do plan on supporting this movement going forward, because again, I think it provides more opportunities for a lot of our students. For me, they're working with the Alliance and not putting the Alliance on the back burner. They are providing advisory groups, and again, they're having two seats for the Soccer Alliance. And I think they're committed to really helping all of our students and our community. And so for me, I do plan on supporting this, and I look forward to hearing what you guys have to say.
I'll go next. Thank you all for your comments. We've read all your emails, your comments here tonight. We do take this very serious. I, for one, the number-one thing that sticks out for me is Court One offers multiple sports, an indoor facility, year-round activities that could support our community, close-by communities. And soccer is very important. I had five kids that did all kinds of sports. I've been part of sports all my life too, and my husband. So soccer is very important, and someone said, "If Court One wins, soccer loses." I do not believe that. And it's very evident, Court One spoke, that they're in negotiations with Court One, or with soccer and Court One for the past several weeks. And I truly believe that both sides are coming together, and that's a wonderful thing. That's what we like to hear. Adam said it, this stuck with me too, and I'm not trying to say anything derogatory, but Adam said, "Where was everyone at the beginning when this all started?" So we appreciate your support, but at the very beginning, we said we were selling the complex, we got two offers. One was higher than the other, we decided to lean one direction, and then now, these other offers are coming in later. We, you know, are in a situation where we decided to go one direction, and is it fair to drop one offer because some more are coming in the door? I don't think that's the way we feel our process was set forward to happen, to go. And...
Did you have open meetings?
This is not for communication.
I can clarify that question. We've had several school board meetings. We've discussed it at several meetings, and at all of our public school board meetings, the community is welcome to come and talk. And in fact, some people in this room have done that. We've heard from people in the DSA. They've come to our meetings when it's been on the agenda. So it's not like this has been the only opportunity for this discussion to happen. It's been a discussion that we've been having as a board pretty much the entire time I've been on it. I know it's been on the topic, you know, a topic since Tammy has been on it. And we've had several meetings where this has been on the agenda, and we have heard from people. So I just want to clarify, like, this wasn't the only opportunity to communicate with us, and in fact, a lot of people have been communicating with us in other ways too, which people have pointed out.
This is a process of public hearing that we have to follow. We do this with everything that we do. This is just, the timing of it, yes, I understand people question it, but it is the timing that we are dealt with and how we have to do it. But there's always been opportunity for this conversation, as Kate has stated. And the conversation has been, from the very beginning, when this lease was renewed ten years ago, it was indicated to the board at that time that this lease would not be renewed after ten years. Then, when that ten years came up, it was, as Ms. Hawkins stated, we gave notification that it was going for sale. And, you know, the process has been very clear and put forward for everyone.
I didn't mean to, I just wanted to back that up. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say what Amy opened up, explaining ten years ago, nine years ago now, how this could have been in the works for everyone involved. But when we actually are getting closer to that year ending, next year in May, then we got two offers, and that's what we're working with. But I am so happy to hear that there is support with the soccer... But I am so happy to hear that there is support with the soccer alliance and Court One. And in my heart, I love sports. That's part of the reason I got on the school board was because activities do support children. It helps their grades. It helps them feel committed, connected to their schools, to their activities, to parents, to friends, family. So I believe this is going to be a great thing for Dubuque. I wouldn't vote for it if I didn't. So I'm glad to hear everyone is, there's, it sounds like you're getting a lot of support. Tonight, we heard a lot of support with the soccer. But trust me, you're not going to be losing your fields from what we have just heard. Thank you.
The support that I think we're hearing is from the leadership who at, you know, the soccer alliance put in their bid. And they didn't, however they submitted their bid, they knew they were going to have a second bidder from the very beginning. And they had an opportunity to put forth their bid, even knowing all along there was going to be a second bidder, and nothing was done at that time. And we kept our process very clear as to what we were doing. We said we were going to accept sealed bids. We looked at the bids and we made a decision. Then, everybody starts coming forward with all this money. Well, I have a very hard problem when I hear all these things, if you do this, then you'll get this money. That is not something, as an elected official sitting here, I am comfortable with accepting at all. And I understand the intent. I don't, I completely understand the intent, but the way that it has been presented to us, for me, sits very uncomfortable with that. The Alliance had a position in the beginning, and in Court One's indication where the board was going to go, they reached out and worked with the Alliance Board of Directors, those who were in the position of making the decisions, and found a working ground that maybe not all of them agreed with, but they seemed to have a working relationship that says, now that I'm learning the facts, and not just the hearsay or the speculation, the facts are saying from the, that this could be something good for soccer. I, change is difficult. I know change is hard. I've been, I've been a soccer mom. My daughter played from age four all the way through high school. I get it. I love the soccer fields. I know what they mean to Dubuque. But I also don't see a problem with change, and it's difficult for change, and that's the hardest part for people, and I understand that. The Dubuque School District leased those fields for a dollar and, you know, gladly did so, but always said, this isn't going to last. And we have been very clear about that all along. We've never hid it. I'm sorry if people didn't hear that, but it, in the change of the leadership at the Alliance, that message should have been carried on. And so, I don't change, I understand the passion, but I do not change my stance on, because of the process that we set forward, the process is clean, and with what we have done, I'm going to continue with my stance on support of Court One.
It was about 30 years ago, nearly, that 47.75 acres of farmland were made available to the community essentially. And a group of like-minded people came forward and, as Mrs. Myers and others have said, worked tirelessly and set aside many other things in their lives, I'm sure, to make possible what we know now as the soccer complex. Those people are to be honored and are certainly to be thanked and recognized. That's an incredible gift to kids, an incredible gift to this community, and it's obvious that that passion is still there. As a Board of Education, we don't have a responsibility to provide soccer facilities for the community, and yet, it's been our privilege to do that for basically $30. That was a good thing to do. And I really do want to honor and recognize and thank all of those, the private individuals, the small groups, the families, the businesses. Some have mentioned John Deere as being a particularly strong helper. This community certainly is proud of what has been created there. As a Board of Education, we're now at a crossroads in terms of what to do with this land. As Tammy said, our understanding from board members who were present at the last time that the, or involved, not just present, at the time that the lease was renewed for 10 years, while it was debated at that time, a decision was made to go forward with an understanding that likely, it would not then be renewed. We've been talking about non-renewal of this as long as I've been on the board, basically, and gave official and timely notice that we would not renew it. Our work is to create a fair process for this community and to generate as many funds using the properties that we have chosen to sell, not because we wanted to sell them, but because we need to liquidate some of our holdings in order to provide for the, what is our role as a Board of Education, and that is to see that the highest quality of education possible is provided to the over 10,000 students entrusted us, to us, by this community. I take that very seriously. This board takes that seriously. You take that seriously. Unfortunately, we're at a point where a process had to be decided upon. It was a transparent process. This community knew that by August 18th at 5:00 PM, Mr. Henry in his office would have received all the bids that this board would consider. And it did. And so we moved on a path of making a decision at that time, which is unpopular to most in this room. Certainly, you represent however many others in the community, and yet, I am grateful that if the prevailing bid was not going to be the current occupants of it, if that's in fact how it goes, and I'm not meaning to prejudge that, then I'm grateful that those who have the vision and the dream of creating a wonderful opportunity for this community not only have come forward with that, but have done so in a spirit of collaboration and honor for the Dubuque Soccer Alliance and Dubuque soccer groups, the various groups. They came to us with that. So yes, their bid prevailed as we come into this decision tonight, the final decision. And yet, here they are, representing an interest in working with the DSA and the various groups of the soccer. To the extent they'll have them on advisory committees, they'll continue the dollar per year kind of thing. Is it what the soccer alliance wants? No. The Friends of the Soccer Group don't want that. And yet, this board is charged with basically one thing, providing for the highest quality of education possible for the children of the Dubuque, the Dubuque Community School District. That means we have to be responsible to make decisions that allow us to do that. So my support for the prevailing bid by Court One will stand as we go into consideration.
I guess it's my turn. I also don't like public speaking, but I guess my stance is the same as I voted last week. I understand the passion. I was an athlete growing up. I have a kid who's going to be an athlete, and I understand that passion. And if I recall, in high school, you know, being at a referendum and feeling as passionate as you all did for the soccer complex. However, I will defend our process. It has been very transparent, very clear. And I also want to say to Court One, I think you're going to be a great addition to our community. And just the, you guys have gone above and beyond for reaching out with the soccer alliance, and we're really grateful for that. So moving forward as a community partner, which it seems like that is most likely, I just want to say thank you for bringing the soccer alliance along with you.
So I want to thank everyone for sharing your feedback and the various ways that folks have done that, and thank the board members for all of the time that they've given to reading emails and responding to people and being at meetings, several special meetings to discuss this. We've talked about the process a bunch of times, and I appreciate that Amy Hawkins laid that out for us at the beginning, just to remind us of where we've been. A process like this matters. It matters that it's fair and transparent because it allows anyone who is interested in purchasing this, these properties to fairly participate in it. And that's why we agreed on the process that we did. And I just mention it because there, like Ms. Ryan has mentioned, there's been some things that have happened post us opening the bids that I think if the shoe was on the other foot, people would be alarmed. You know, if the larger bid had been DSA and another entity was, you know, offering more money or contingent money if they get the bid, like, I think people would rightfully be concerned by that. And as an elected official, I'm concerned by it. And so I agree with Ms. Ryan, and I think it comes from a good place. I think it comes from a commitment and a passion for the soccer complex and for kids who play there and for all of the hard work that went into there. So, you know, that is clear. And it also gives me a lot of optimism about the possibilities on the future because the DSA leadership now is working with Court One, having discussions about what can it be? What are we possibly getting that we don't have now? How could it even be better for these organizations? And I think that's the best that we could have hoped for as a board to come out of these discussions, because this has been a very challenging couple of weeks or months trying to kind of decide what is the right choice. It's not always clear at times, like, directly what that should be. But like I said a couple of weeks ago when we had this discussion, like, I think it's really important for us to remember why we are doing this, why we set these properties up for sale, and where that decision came from in the first place. And it was, as Ms. Bradley was saying, to make sure that we have the funds available for public education, for kids, funds for kids and for our schools. You know, we talk about budget numbers, and while $250,000 might not be a lot when we think about our total operating budget, I think about the amount of new money that we're going to be getting from the state of Iowa this year, when we know that supplemental state aid was set at 2.3%. And you all know, and we know, that costs and inflation are way higher than that. We know that we gave our staff an increase in their salaries and their wages that was higher than we're going to be getting from the state. You know, so we're making the best decisions that we can in a landscape where funding is not where it needs to be and could possibly be even worse in the future when public education is kind of on the chopping block in many ways in the state. So I think it's up to this board to be responsive to that. If you think about 2.3%, that might not sound like a lot. When we think about our funding being tied to enrollment and our enrollment going down, like, that number, the dollars that we could possibly getting in new money is not very high. And Kevin could probably correct me if I'm way off. So I hope I'm doing okay, Kevin. I mean, we don't know, it's more like 1% increase of our, of new money. And so when you're talking about that, $250,000 compared to $600,000, it's a lot of money. It could make a big impact. And I trust that this board will make good decisions about how to best use that in ways that will impact all of our students or many of our students or our staff in really positive ways. So that's my long-winded way of just saying, we need to keep it focused on why we're doing it. We certainly didn't want to be in the position of selling this property. We definitely didn't want to be in the position of closing Fulton School, which had a huge impact on the people that went there and that neighborhood. We don't want to be in future positions of having to continue these closings. But that's where we're at, and we have to be responsive to it. We have to think about what's coming so that we can provide the best public education possible for kids. So to me, that's why I continue to support the vote that I made before and support the vote for Court One.
I just wanted to say one more thing. There's a lot of positive energy in this room, and I hope the two groups, if the vote does go towards Court One, that the soccer families and friends can work together with the Alliance, the Court One, and have a great outcome, that soccer will live on, so will other sports, and will have an indoor facility.
I mean, we're seeing the impact that a lot of committed, positive people can have, and you can keep doing that. And I hope that you do.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that the Board of Education adopt the authorizing resolution as submitted for the proposed private sale of district property located at 12896 JFK Kennedy Road to Court One LLC.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the authorizing resolution as submitted for the proposed private sale of district property located at 12896 JFK Road to Court One LLC. Is there any discussion? Any more discussion?
I think we had, I think we had our discussion. Everybody contributed things very well, spoke from your heart, like I did, we all did. So let's just go with the vote.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote.
Bradley?
Aye.
Jones?
Nay.
Parks?
Aye.
Prohaska?
Nay.
Ryan?
Aye.
Sancy?
Aye.
And Whitman.
Whitman? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Let me just make sure I get that correct. Whitman?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. So that moves us to the next part of our agenda.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
We can take a five-minute recess. We're in recess for five minutes. All right, we hereby reconvene our regular meeting of the school board.
And I move the Board of Education approve those items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item that a board member would like us to move, to discuss? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, so that brings us to the Facilities Support Services Committee report from Ms. Whitman.
Thank you. We had our meeting September 6th. I'll just highlight a couple of things. We had updates on our current district projects, such as senior high school, Hempstead School interim replacement, the central kitchen, the Hempstead School kitchen freezer. We had an update with the middle school consolidation study. And by the way, there's monthly meetings with that, and at the last meeting, we talked about sites for middle schools, and this will engage more community input, so our next meeting is next week. We had an update on synergistics, request for allowable growth for special education, and Kevin Kelleher reviewed the investment quotes results that we had. So I do have two motions. I move the Board of Education approve change order number one to Ports and Construction Incorporated on the central kitchen mechanical replacement project in the decreased amount of $7,885.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Ports and Construction Incorporated on the central kitchen mechanical replacement project in the decreased amount of $7,885. Is there any discussion, other than Joy, that that was a decreased amount, which doesn't happen all the time? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Next motion. I move the Board of Education...
Make sure your mics are on, everyone.
Yeah, mine is.
Mine is now on.
Okay, I move the Board of Education approve the amendment to the professional service agreement with Invision Architect LTD for the middle school consolidation study in the increased amount of $4,200.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the amendment to professional services agreement with Invision Architecture LTD for the middle school consolidation study in the increased amount of $4,200. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thanks, Ms. Whitman, for that very succinct report.
You're welcome.
So next, we're to Ed Programs and Policy Committee report from Ms. Bradley. So next, we're to Ed Programs and Policy Committee report from Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Dr. Parks. We did not have a succinct meeting, but we had an excellent meeting on September 7th.
That's true.
It was loaded with, with information for the board and for those who attended to really take a look at the educational programming side of, of our work. And so I will, after my report, that'll be as brief as it can, I have two motions to bring forward for the board's consideration. So our first thing was to take a look at Strategic Plan Priority Initiative Number Five. Shirley Horstman, who's the Executive Director of Student Services, and her colleague Mary Bridgette Deutsch, who works with Student Services, were with us. They brought us information in three areas of their work. One is dealing with homeless students, and that took us into information about the McKinney-Vento Federal Program, which identifies students as homeless, and it works to provide them with support. So the board was very impressed with the kinds of work that's going on with our homeless students. We have information that says that a larger number of homeless students have already been identified this year, 118, while last year at this time, there were 77. So unfortunately, we see that as a increasing trend line for the number of homeless students that are being identified. Ms. Deutsch is working with the school registration process to identify additional homeless students who may need our support. So we also heard from them about the student mentoring program. And having experienced that directly myself for a number of years, I really want to encourage adults in our community who could give a half hour a week to work with a student, not in a tutorial kind of way, in a come and be a caring adult with a child 30 minutes a week. It is, it is an incredible thing to see what that can do for some of our children. And I encourage each and every person who has interest or might have interest in it to contact either a school, they can go directly to the school, ask to speak with the principal, and otherwise contact either Shirley Horstman or Mary Bridgette Deutsch by going through the, the switchboard here. So that number of mentors is ever needing to grow. Last year, we had 124. Personally, I'd like to see that be 500 at the very least. Children need us, and caring, a caring adult is, seems like something that this community, as a caring community, can really step forward and increase its numbers. So we encourage that. The other thing that Ms. Horstman and Ms. Deutsch brought to us was information on suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention. That's a subject near and dear to all of us. And we certainly, the board was very pleased to hear many of the initiatives and activities that are going on, some of the tools that are being made available to our guidance counselors in our schools to help students. Next week is National Suicide Awareness Week, and we were very pleased to hear that brain health training for 350 staff members has already taken place this fall. It will continue with large numbers of additional of our staff members being trained. And all sophomores this year will, will get teen mental health first aid training, which again seeks to help them have, have opportunities to be able to help themselves if they know, or help a friend or someone they know who might need that help. So we were appreciative of that information. We then moved on to the educational programs, part of hearing about the TAP program. I've heard it, I've known of TAP for a very long time, but didn't know much about it. So we appreciated Brenda Duvel, our Executive Director of Special Education, and her colleague Lori Anderson, who works with her in working with disabled students, to come and tell us about the TAP program, Transition Alliance Program. It's been in place for eight years. They brought to us a request for funding for the program, which is an ongoing funding. I'll get to that in my motion. And they informed us that two staff members who work with that program are facilitators for the three high school settings, senior Hempstead and the Alta Vista campus, to set up the opportunity for our entitled students and students on 504 plans to be able to get out into the community and job shadow and have internships set up for them. They also shared with us that two TAP job coaches now are in place to help students transition into the work world and into their job sites. I think it's a very exciting program. It's, it's available for freshmen through age 25. We don't normally think of programming in the Dubuque School District extending to age 25, but for our entitled students who receive special programming and for our students on 504 plans, that is available, and it's a wonderful thing. So we were very, very pleased to learn that 150 students at each of the two main high schools are receiving those services through the TAP program. So bravo to all of that. We then moved on to the ISB, Iowa Association of School Board Legislative Action Priorities. Once a year, the ISB and the UEN Urban Education Network, the eight largest districts in the state, one of which we are, gather together to, as an official once-a-year business meeting to function as a, an effective and influencing organization. And each school district is asked to choose a handful of legislative priorities that the district sees to be a priority for itself. So Superintendent Hawkins brought us five recommendations. We happily accepted all of those and added two others to it. I'll just quickly give you an overview of that. First is achievement gap loss from in-person instruction. That means that we would, Dr. Parks is our representative to the delegate assembly. She'll see that as one of the things she'll work to help the ISB, as I was saying, of school boards, to put forward as a legislative priority. That's to support additional resources to school districts and AEAs to identify achievement gaps among students who, that has occurred as a result of health pandemics and in some settings, natural disasters. The second is, they call it mental health, we like to call it brain health. It is in fact a legislative priority to support efforts to establish comprehensive community brain health systems to offer preventative and treatment services in comprehensive school brain health programs. We see that as a high priority from our district to that process. Third, teacher recruitment and licensure. We know that there is a serious shortage of teachers in this state as well as across the nation. So this priority supports additional tools to attract individuals into the teaching profession, especially for teacher shortage areas, and it includes a look, further look at alternative teacher licensure. So we support that as a legislative priority. Fourth, dropout and at-risk. We're looking at supporting the inclusion of dropout prevention and funding for at-risk students in the foundation formula to become a standard part of the funding formula, which it has not been. And inclusion of socioeconomic status as a factor in determining a student's at-risk status. In other words, districts who have a high number of, of highly at-risk students likely to face dropout kinds of decisions, we're asking that that be given additional funding in the funding formula. Five, supplemental state aid. This will support setting supplemental state aid at a rate that sufficiently supports local districts' efforts to plan, create, and sustain world-class schools. The board has spoken, you've heard me speak often, of the funding crisis that we're facing. And so this seeks to encourage our legislators and governor to increase that funding. Number six, one of the ones that the board chose to add to superintendent's recommendations, the first of those two is preschool. And that supports continued funding to assure that all, all four and five-year-olds have access to the statewide voluntary preschool program. And with that goes a recommendation to increase the funding from the current weighting of .5 per preschool child to 1.0, which would allow us to offer full-day programming as a four- and five-year-old option. And the last thing, the second that we added, was area education agencies, and this supports full and equitable funding across all area education agencies to provide essential services. I sit on the Keystone Area Education Agency Board, and have learned how extensively the AEAs support the work of the school districts, be they small or be they large. And so that includes special education, technology, professional learning, curriculum assessment, student assessment data, and teacher training on social and emotional learning and services for students in schools. So with those seven identified, Dr. Parks will represent us at the delegate assembly in Des Moines in November and be a part of putting forward, along with our superintendent, those seven legislative priorities. So with that concluding, oh, not concluding, the last thing is Policy 5200, which is student behavior, expectations, and consequences. We had a considerable discussion about that, a good discussion, and Mimi Holzinger brought us excellent revision for Policy 5200, which is a very long and complex policy. And so we were happy to pass that in the consent agenda earlier in this meeting. So with that, I will bring forward the two recommendations, going back to the TAP program. I move that the Board of Education approve the professional contract with Iowa Vocational Rehab, Rehabilitation Services in the amount of $230,690.30.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the professional contract with Iowa Vocational Rehabilitation Services, and I actually don't have that amount.
Yeah, maybe.
Correct.
Got it.
And that, just a comment on that.
Well, is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Oh, so sorry. Oh, thank you. Half of that is reimbursed to the district at the end of the school year we learned. So that's good news.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And the second of my two motions, I move that the Board of Education approve the Iowa Association of School Board Legislative Priorities.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the Iowa School Board Legislative Priorities. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries. Thank you, Ms. Bradley.
Certainly.
That takes us to new business.
I move the Board of Education approve the district emergency operations plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the district emergency operations plan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And one more recommendation. I move the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 814272 and number 812060 and number 814058 at this time.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 814272, number 812060, and number 814058 at this time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Any other board member or administrative issues that are not on the agenda?
I'll just say that the room is empty now, but I do appreciate all of the people that came forward. And I know it seems like they don't think we listen to them a lot in the room. That is not true. We do listen to them, we hear them, but we also listen to the facts that we have presented as opposed to the fear of what is not known. And we base our decisions based on a lot of that. And, you know, it's a hard decision. We've stated it in our, in our, you know, vote, and I won't hash that out, but I do appreciate the people coming forward, and, and I hope it does tune them in, you know, when we say we've been telling you this, that we mean, that we, you know, we, it's all out there. They can go back and look through, you know, records and files. And so I, not that we want them to, because it costs money and time. I mean, they can on their own. But, you know, I appreciate it. I just want to make that known, that I do appreciate everybody that came forward and stated what they had to say. And I know they don't agree with all, some don't, and some do. I mean, that's the position we're in.
And I do want to also give appreciation, and you guys are probably going to be shocked, but it's to all of you. And the reason why I want to appreciate each and every single one of you is it just seems like in the last few years, being an elected official at all levels is just becoming more difficult, that you can't have an opinion that's opposite from other people without being judged or attacked. And I appreciate each and every single one of you bringing your fresh perspectives to try to move the district forward collectively. And what people don't see is we always don't agree with each, with each other, but I think we have something that ties us all together, and that is what's best for all kids. We all say that, we all believe that, and we stand by that. And so I recognize, you know, things are tough, but I appreciate you standing strong and sharing your perspective and always keeping students first. So from me to all of you, I do want to say I appreciate you guys and your service to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. I agree.
I'll kind of echo that a little bit. I appreciate all of you. It's, it's, it's good that we don't always have seven zero votes on things. I think this shows a little bit of strength, a little bit of diversity in our board, and we don't always have to agree on things. We're still going to be friends. And like Tammy said, I appreciate the people showing up. You know, they're passionate both ways about their feelings about the sports complex, and I really hope that they have success and they get along with each other and they develop the plan that's best for the youth of our community. I did want to add just a couple of things here. Reminder, Wednesday, we're meeting, are we meeting back here at 4:30?
Yes.
And I just briefly, just one other thing, I talked briefly with Brian. Our staffing is for the better part, for the start of the school year is pretty much complete, very few vacancies. So we're doing something right here in Dubuque to keep our employees here, keeping them relatively happy, keep our teachers here, et cetera. So, good job.
And we're still doing a shout-out, that if you'd like to be a bus driver.
He didn't mention bus drivers.
Take bus drivers, and we will train you and provide that, all the training you would need to drive to and from school each day, so, for sure. I just would like to echo what all of you have said. I mean, I appreciate each and every one of you. We've had a lot of special meetings and spent a lot of extra time, and I think sometimes the community doesn't understand the time that all of you put in for a big check that you get each month, right?
Yeah.
I think we've been getting that.
Yeah, but I appreciate you, and I appreciate having a full house, you know, that this was a very, you know, people were passionate about this topic, and I think ultimately, you know, we did our, we followed our facility beliefs, we followed our process, and kids won. So that's a win for all of us. So thank you.
Well said.
Yep.
All right, let's adjourn, school board.
Let's go.
We are adjourned.